All right, I'm calling meeting to order at five oh one P M. Apologies for the. Approved and signed the minutes from the September seventeenth meeting.
Make a motion approve the minutes.
Do you want a second?
Yeah.
All right, all those are favorable? Next up. It's Mr. Jim Chu's bro and the Conservation Commission. Thank you, Seth.
Thank you. To begin with, this is informational, I think it's important to select people. Those select people in the community know what actions have been taken place and. The very first thing that we've been working on for the longest time is a management plan for that. Property, I had been hoping to bring you our final draft to give you for your input and then. An approval, unfortunately, we were not able to have our last meeting because of a lack of the forum, so. I actually in my phone have. Final edited draft that we are going to be reviewing, but I didn't have it for you tonight. I can share. That. We have formed a subcommittee from the W C C to work on a climbing management plan. And those people have started meeting and this will be a separate, actually appendix to the overall management plan and it'll deal specifically with climbing. Going to be using. A document from Vermont, I'm sure Gillian already talked about it. As as a jumping off point and they're contacting members of the Central New Hampshire Climbers Association to work with them on that. Our kiosk is. Pretty much finished as much as it can be finished before it's installed. And now that Roy Littaker, who's here tonight, returns from traveling. We can set up a time for volunteers to install it. Mark Sellingham and I went down to find the location that we wanted to make sure was on. Miriam Woods property, not the town of Woodstock's property that abuts that and not the state right of way. And we think we found one, we're hoping there aren't too many rocks. I can share with you on a side note that Samantha Bobo Woodward, who is the Conservation Commission Chair. And Kristen DeRozier, who's also on the committee, both joined me as a member of Pearl acting tests on the Pema Gwasit River. Over this past summer, we had four sites, the first site was the Green Bridge. The next site was the, I call it the I G A Bridge, but I don't know what you guys call it.
I G A Bridge.
I G A Bridge, yes. The next was the bridge at Clark's Trading Post by between Clark's and Arnold's. And then the last was the Pema Gwasit Camp, the Latia Campground. And. We get our readings and we send them to Concord and then they. Take all that data and put it together, so all we can guess is that the readings we were getting, it seems like the river is in pretty good shape. We do twice take samples that go to the lab and are tested. That's when we're looking for E. coli and things like that, we have no idea what that will be. And we probably won't because the reason the volunteer river assessment program exists is there's so much water in New Hampshire. D E S can't monitor at all. And it takes a long time to bring all this data together, but we should get some sort of report which will be able to share with everybody and. I think they're looking at the after the first of the year. Kind of think that this work is important because first of all, that's an important resource for the town, I mean, we get a lot of people here. The the tourists and it's also an important environmental concern, so we do it that way. On Friday, August twenty third, I attended a workshop that was presented by the U N H Extension Service and sponsored by the New Hampshire Association of Conservation Commissions. On managing conservation easements, in other words, what we should be doing. I got a lot of valuable instruction, I also got to try and walk a property line. And I'm too old to be jumping over walls and everything else, but. And then I got a lot of sample forms and materials to take away. And now I think. We have a little bit better handle on what we need to be doing to as as managers of this property. The biggest takeaway is the monitoring, we need to do much more monitoring and not only monitoring, but recording our monitoring. So twenty years from now, there's something they need to go back and see and that's what we really didn't have when we started. On the Conservation Commission, it probably exists somewhere. The members at the workshop said, yeah, they usually do exist, they're in somebody's sock drawer or. But so to begin with. We are developing a system of monitoring that property, the first thing and you might have. I hope a hard copy so you can look along with policy for the use of trail cameras in the management area of Woods. But that allowed us to purchase game cameras which were set up a while back and. The question came, I brought up the question at the workshop, what's, what do we have to know about R S A? Right to no law, I can't remember, if somebody. Wants to take a look at that camera stuff. I know that we are supposed, we have to have it for them, but we weren't sure exactly what. Needed to happen, so I contacted the Conservation Commission lady and she said, I don't know, let me check with the other towns. She contacted the other towns, some of them say we don't bother with anything like that, others would say they they do all this, this and this. But the thing that we needed was we needed to have a policy that spells out. She put me in touch with the municipal association and their lawyers told me what we needed to include in a policy. One of the things is you have to tell when the when the starting is. When the. When the cameras are in use, et cetera, et cetera, but there's nothing in the statute that says how long you have to keep them. So I checked with the police chief, the town does not have a policy per se for their. Cameras that they use, it automatically after a certain point erases and refills it and everything else. I would like you to take a look at this because I think this is something that the select board needs to approve. We've listed the purpose and the need. Where the cameras are located, how they're identified. This is has been a lot of work done by Samantha Bobo Woodward. The plan that you have in front of you has a location, a map of the property with the locations of the different cameras and a schedule of. The process of some of the cameras are checked every two weeks, others that are not in main routes and things like that are checked less frequently. And the person who's doing it is Samantha right now, she knows that she needs to keep everything with them. With batteries and everything else when she goes out, the trail cameras are marked. On a quarterly basis, she's going to evaluate the camera locations and then let us know when she changes them. The one site I know, I think the only pictures that came back from the camera were when Samantha set it up. And then when she took it down, so there's not much happening there. The we'll look at what a report looks like, but. It's the intention of the Conservation Commission to give the select board. A monthly report on what we found as far as usage and that's the main reason why we're doing it. They'll. Hopefully. Because we're giving them to you, they become part of your minutes and then they're part of the. Public record too, so that the public could access them as well. There's currently no end date for the project. But if we should have any changes in camera location or decommissioning cameras, et cetera. That will be reported to the select board as well, but I'm hoping you guys can take a look at this and then approve it and say. And then we'll go forward with it or we'll make any changes that you suggest. I did talk with Chief Millar, he is currently rewriting this S O P's operating procedures for the police department. And he said he was coming up up to that one and when he got to it, he would send me one. Our concern was we didn't want to be in conflict with anything that already existed for the town. So if you have any questions on that, it might be good to do now.
This is great. Committee for doing all this work, yeah.
I don't know if I've missed it, Jim, is there a schedule for taking them down for the winter?
I think she's gonna leave them up. If if she does take them down, then that gets reported, so.
Right, well, I'm just thinking battery exposure all winter and.
Right.
Sounds like she plans on going out there theoretically.
I think the game cameras are made.
She she has a great time when she goes out there, she's always on a good mood when she gets back.
Just curious, I'm just putting that up.
Yeah, and you know, there's lots of things to consider, number one, we told her she can't go by herself, she always has to go there with somebody else and that's something that. The the workshop emphasized too. Right. So what does the report look like, the one very pretty one? That has, this is from Samantha, I'm not sure when I received it, few days ago. But you can see that she lists one hundred ninety seven people were recorded recreating in Miriam Woods. According to identifying, you know, if they've got ropes and everything else, they're probably climbers, so seventy four percent of the people were climbers, the remaining were hikers, walkers and runners. A lot of them get to see as you look in the second page halfway down, I can't tell who that is, but.
That's cute.
He's got, he he found a game camera and he's just as photogenic as the deer on the front or the bear on the bottom of the second page. So this. So this I'd like to have. Put into the minutes and and recorded here. You received a copy of this digitally today, but here's one for you. And here's the policy.
The policy, there's really, is there any reason for the town attorney to look at it or, I mean, it's.
The animals aren't gonna see.
It's more the right, it's more the right to know or request it.
And the policy is those film, the 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 pictures, it's not video, pictures will be on file for two months. And while they're in existence. In existence, if somebody requests, then we make those available to the people. After two months, they are destroyed. And so that's that's pretty important. Managing the conservation easement is a lot more than what I was told when I got roped into being on the commission. I used to go down there and look at it and it's really fine and then I would go home and say, hey, did you know Connie, and it isn't, she'd go, no, where is it? I'd say, oh, it's down there on Triple I Road, oh. Good for you. Well. Once we started working with the increased usage during COVID and then after COVID and the development of the management plan. Found out it's quite a bit of work and it's been over two, almost two years, working on just developing a management plan. And a lot of people have put a lot of time into it and then I went to the workshop and found out there's a whole bunch more that has to happen. The first thing is to create a conservation easement summary and you have a handout, it's just a short one. And basically what it does is we would put this on file and this is a really short overlook, over overview of. The conservation warranty deed, the easement deed that the Miriam's gave to us back in nineteen eighty. Just who owns it, who manages it, how big is it, was, where is it? The executiveary interest power of terminations from the Society of the Protection of the Nippon Forests. Preservation of the Nippon Forests and why the, according to the warranty deed, what was the purpose of easement? Things that are restricted, things that are not specified and then reserved rights or special conditions and. When I returned, attended the workshop, they were talking about a warranty deed that was from nineteen ninety five and they said those old warranty deeds are really hard to work with. And I said, you should see the ones from nineteen eighty, there are so many gray areas and everything else. The only two special conditions and new warranty deeds have many more special conditions, but the only two for the Miriam Woods are. The name of it, it has to be known as Miriam Woods and we may not sell it and if we ever wish to give up the ownership or. The the or we don't meet for the terms of the warranty, then it, the property goes back to the. Society for the Preservation of the Nippon Forests. So. These, I'll ask Judy after we've, the question I have about storing and things like that. Many conservation properties have a supplemental. Conservation easement which describes specific events that have happened on the property. And again, this is so that future generations will not have to reinvent the wheel and things like that. So the conservation easement supplement is currently under construction, I'm making it. It'll have a description of the activity, it'll include trail listings and maps. We now know how many. Different climbing areas there are, how many different climbing routes there are in different areas. And that will all be in in the supplement. And the map of the area. And finally. We need to do a better job of monitoring it, just going down there and walking through the thing, that's why I was asking if you ever do it because we could have you take a little form with you and do some observations.
It's in the form, I might even have a husband that could walk it for you.
So this this form lists. Items when you go down there, Mark Sellingham, John Plummer from, Mark's on the Conservation Commission, John Plummer from the Society. Of Preservation of Nippon Forests, they went with me that day, but. Usually the society just monitors some satellite or by. You know, they just write us a letter and say what's going on and we tell them. Because of the recent activities there and things, John decided to come and take a nice walk, so we did and we walked out. One of the things that I think I mentioned to you before. Is that the forester who is making the plan for forestry there suggested that we get the property property surveyed. Because while the pins are there and if you have a good working compass and everything else, you can go from pin to pin pretty accurately. You cannot. See where the lines are. The only thing that indicates the lines are the butters putting up signs that say private property beyond this point. So it was suggested that we. Have the property surveyed, that would be a good idea, had the survey in eighty one when we got the property. You, the select board asks if we could find out how much that would cost. It's a lot of money, somewhere that they they the forest, forester has a surveyor that they use. And it's like somewhere between five and ten thousand dollars depending upon the can, the condition of the hundred nineteen acres and the markers and everything. We seem to think it'd be on the lower end. And after I finally hear back from the forester or the surveyor, they're also out straight, you can't get anybody. So I'll be including that in our budget discussions that are coming up really soon. What we did when we did this observation is we watched, walked the trailhead path. That's the name of the path that we didn't make it up, somebody else made that up and I think it was climbers. To what's called crooked tree and the boulders. And when we got there, we found that there was a new path that had developed from Triple I Road, it's on the back page. You can just barely see Triple I Road in the background and this is, to me. We aren't sure whether it's climbers going in and out or just coming in there and parking up the hill a bit or. I'm thinking more likely after they climb, they go back out to the road and it's a much easier sludge back back to to where their cars are parked down by the gate. So. As you can see, there's that that wasn't there a couple at the beginning of this year. But again, it's not a an issue where it looks like they're destroying the property and everything else. But now we have that noted, so if we go there next year and we see that it's all rented out for mountain biking or something like that, which is not allowed on the property. We have a document that then we can. Try and deal with. With from an informed. Position. I have not heard anything about the proposed parking lot in Thornton. I know that the New Hampshire Climbers Association got zoning permission to do that, unfortunately, they had a tragedy in the last. Four months, I guess, I'm not sure exactly when it happened, one of their key members was killed in a climbing accident in a in a climbing gym, not on the. And so the whole community was pretty much involved in the memorial for him, I guess there were over three hundred people that went. Tracy Morgan, who's on our Conservation Commission, she actually worked with this person and she attended the the service and. Samantha Bobo Woodward's letter of condolence and everything else, but it really shook up the climbing community, so not much has happened in that. Except we know that. It's not Woodstock, so it's a Thornton decision and everything, they were gracious enough to ask us as a butters what we thought. And we'll have to just wait and see what happens with that.
Last I heard was maybe three weeks ago, it was actually now finally changed hands. The property.
Yeah, they were gonna close on from from purchasing from the owner.
Probably three weeks. Last time. Oh, I've heard that was from. From one of the. Real.
Yeah, and the only other thing that's suggested is I can. There's a map here, it shows the location of the possible positioning of the kiosks. At the bottom of the hill as you first walk in, there's problems with that, this this is a great piece of equipment, it'll last thousands of years, it'll be. That means it's heavy and how we're gonna get it in there, it's gotta be with volunteers who don't know enough to say no. The other red dot is where that new trail exists, where it goes out. And then the blue track is where we went out the trail and the red track is where we came back on the highway on on Triple I Road. So every time I can get myself down there to do an observation in a report like this, I will. I hope that some of the other members of the commission will start to do that as well. We need to do it by the warranty deed, we, it's just ethically, we need to be doing it on a regular basis. And probably in the winter as well as in the spring, because usage becomes quite different. When walking the woods with a forester, the climbing area is probably not never gonna be cut because it's too inaccessible to get trees out of there. So with the forester, I walked the northwest side of the property. And as we got up near the top, we found that trees about four inches in diameter were stumped, cut off. And they were about the height of the depth of snow in the wintertime, so I'm thinking that in the winter. There are skiers who are accessing it, backcountry skiers who are going in there. Now, that's terrific, we just don't want them changing anything and we're hoping that with the kiosk and the listing of things that you're not supposed to do, that will that will stop. But we really hope that. We'll be able to monitor more and then have documents, now here's where my question is before I ask your questions, Judy. You told me that every official document in the state of New Hampshire has to exist in a paper copy, that's correct? I think it would be easier for the communities to access these documents. If they were in a digital form.
You can do both.
Do both.
Yeah.
That's what we do right now.
Is there room on the town website for the conservation thing to have the plan and these reports?
I believe you have a page, don't you?
We have a page, I just don't know how big it is. Okay, so that's what we would do and as far as.
And I think I had sent a while ago, a long time ago, I tried to meet with somebody to learn how to use the page and set up access for you and. An email, but.
That didn't happen?
No.
Okay.
We'll have to refresh on that, but yeah, we can absolutely give you access to that.
Okay. What's the suggestion for the paper copies, I don't want to put them in my sock drawer.
Well, you have a closet with a file cabinet, that third one.
Is there a file cabinet in there?
There is.
There's also a T V in there.
Well, maybe you could talk to the library, see if they really need that anymore, but. Behind that T V, if you roll it out, there's your cabinet and that's historically where the Conservation has always kept their files.
And I I knew that, I was just being a jerk. But it is very difficult to access that, I mean, I went through everything that was in there about a year ago and threw out a whole bunch of out of date stuff that wasn't there. I kept things like plans for developments.
You should check with your Conservation Commission. Association and find out the retention laws on things, some things are for life and some things, but they should have a retention policy by law or statute. That tells you how long you require.
They should, and then we follow it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's easily, I just wanted to. Make sure that that was something that you guys.
I don't think that closets had attention in probably fifteen years.
Well, I did it a year ago, I might have threw a whole bunch of stuff out.
Yeah, like they haven't, it hasn't been really active, you guys are just becoming more active now, so it's, yeah.
But the biggest thing is that dying T V, just trying to get in there, it's a pain.
I will check with Wendy, see if she don't need it.
I'll see.
And if she doesn't, maybe we can.
If she does, is there another home for it so that they don't have to?
We can put it out here in the hallway.
What we used, what we used to do at Yukon when I was in charge of all the computers in the department was, and we had to replace them. We would take the old ones and we would put them out in the hall and just leave them there and they would disappear. They just disappeared, someone came along, oh, a computer, cool, and they took it, then I found out. They got, they got smart and they didn't start taking the computers because those would be. Required, paid money to recycle them, so they went in and they took out the little memory cards and just left the computer there and stuff, so.
We'll check with the library and see what they can do with their T V.
So. We've been very busy, I haven't listed everything that's been going on, but. I hope this makes you a little bit more aware, we would like you to approve or. As as the governing board, you're a final person, when we get the plan, management plan done to our satisfaction, it goes to you. And you're the ones that approve it before we even send it out to anybody else and if it's okay, we. You know, you're supposed to let us know to make changes and things like that. And I think that's pretty much it unless you guys have any questions.
Are you gonna put the. Money for the survey into your budget for next year?
Uh, if.
When you find out what it is.
Yeah, and. I don't know, if it's twenty thousand dollars, we might consider. Capital, what's it, a capital reserve fund, I don't think, not for us.
Yeah, yeah. Did we talk about it last year? So but so we could potentially.
Wendy, it's five or six thousand, you should be up to doing it.
Well, that's that's up to you, you folks and then the town. Be a separate, would it have to be a separate article because it's so. Many dollars? Or do we just put it into our budget? A line item in the budget, okay, I just saw that our mailbox has our budget. It's time, I think the lady wanted it. Is it the end of October or the fifteenth of October?
It's okay, we'll we we'll work with you.
Because I don't meet, the commission doesn't meet again until the end of October, so. Cause I don't meet, the commission doesn't meet again until the end of October, so.
Is the um, the climbing management plan that you're doing, will it be a supplement to the?
It's a supplement to the master, yes. And it deals with many more specific things, things that I know nothing about. I'm lucky, I know now the difference between an area and a route.
You you folks have done a wonderful job, we appreciate. Everything and all the time and and obviously sweat that you've put into uh, to this project.
Thanks, guys.
Oh, thank you, Sue. I would make a motion to accept the policy for the usage of trail cameras and the management of Mar- Marion Woods, does a second? All those in favor? Non-voting number on that though? Yeah, no, no problem, all those in favor?
And that's you'll put the other stuff into the minutes somehow, I hear it, there is a digitalized thing. Um, the Judy guy.
Okay.
Of the first two items, the policy and. Yeah, I'll I'll email you, that's what I always do and say, hey, can you put this on our website?
Thank you again, Jim, and thank you for the presentation, tonight. Next up, we have you open and award the bid for School Street. So the RFP for that went out. It's been out probably a couple weeks now and bids were due um, today by pre yeah. Do we have just the one bid?
One bid? That was a bad time, we have to go and everybody's. Every finished up projects and racing against time for the processing plans.
The last one that went out, we only got one too.
Got what?
Alright. So scope alert. Cold plane, existing asphalt to a depth of one and a half. Plane, we can clean. Light asphalt. And supply and saw, machine paid asphalt saw, okay. Uh, so we have the one quote, our one proposal is from GMI Asphalt. And the total estimated cost is forty eight thousand six hundred dollars.
Yes. I guess fifty.
Right, and the COI is much too much. Did he indicate? Anything to you as far as when they?
We have no idea.
Oh, that's like you wouldn't have known.
Tell me get an idea, this sometime this week, once I notify.
I'll come tomorrow.
Go an extra week after.
I will see if they can, I'm sure that.
A week after.
A week after.
One week after, I will try.
It's it was still.
It lingers a week.
Still busy one week after, and then it is over.
I will reach out to them, but I need them to.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposal from GMI Asphalt. Um, to pave School Street in the amount of forty eight thousand six hundred dollars. Alright, all those in favor, I, all those abstain?
Scott, you abstain?
Yeah.
It would just be really, really.
If it moves, it won't like anything else has been moving lately?
I remember Ice Castle agreements, Nick Clark Farm Road, Winter Maintenance Agreement.
I read through them, it looks fine to me, I think.
I would just say, update your dates.
The rate that we charge.
I just, before I send this off to them. Start trying to get all the insurance and everyone.
Right.
I wanted to make sure you had no changes because I don't wanna send it to them and then have.
That's right, we beat it to that quite good last year.
So up, and you wanted to go for my, and I'll give it to him tomorrow.
Mike should look at it, you know, but I think it must match as a problem, right?
I haven't sent them through them yet, I would.
I would let them know that um. There should not be any activity until we get, you keep the documents required and that we would not, we will not be signing anything until. All of the documents have been received.
Right.
We 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 try to hide for hide, but we will.
Now it's been recorded, it's in the minutes that.
And um, I'd like to start now so that it.
Yeah, we might, if we guys ever done on on time, plenty of time to.
And quite honestly, I shouldn't be the one initiating it, we should. We're just gonna do it.
Okay. Great, thank you.
So no changes on the base rate and dates and send to Mike first and then.
I would went through it a lot last year.
Oh, it's then through the lawyers, it's then through insurance.
Okay, so next up, we have an email here and a letter of request. So it is from Bruce Vale. Requesting public parking sign be put up for the gravel parking area behind the fire department. Will put up signage stating what it can be used for the restaurant prior to five P M or reverse the town if need. J B Grant is a subcontractor for the town and will maintain the parking lot in regards to shovel and crowding and salting. Thank you for your time on this matter, if you have any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to contact me.
But send this off to legal. And I sent it off to insurance too. The Laura's opinion is attached in there too.
Right.
I agree with her.
Yeah.
I agree too.
Yeah, I can just take over something.
Think what she's saying is you can't, you don't wanna put a public parking sign up there, if people use it, find it. Okay. You don't wanna put up a public parking sign there, that's basically just that I get out of it.
Um, and the and the area is an actual park.
Right, exactly.
Um, is there either, to either of you, you're both here, do either of you have any comments or preferences either way or? Sorry, I'm not meaning to put you on the spot. I mean, are you in agreement with this or you're? I don't think we need a sign that says no public parking, we're just not going to.
We are or have ordered signs for behind John's, it's gonna say Fire Department, parking, uh, in the backside of it. Because that was becoming, we'll just leave the other one as it is.
For that burn that goes down to the, okay.
And what's gonna happen for the few locals that know about it, they'll park down there and the employees will end up parking there.
I was gonna say, probably just be employees, yeah, clear, there's a few spaces.
It probably doesn't do any harm, but you don't wanna big P up there saying.
Well, I mean, Sean has fires coming in.
No, I think that's why John should. Amen, if he thinks we shouldn't say.
Keep everything as pavement for John for his meetings and responders and stuff like that.
Right, do we need to add? Like the to, like we have in the.
We're working on getting.
Yeah.
Working with the state right now, getting one written up.
You shall be towed if you park here?
We're going to try that, and that, we don't know that it will hold up until maybe we have to adopt some or amend our parking ordinance. We don't know, it's because it's a parking lot, but anyways, we're, yes, they're going, there's gonna be signs.
I mean, it's fine. I'm using it, it's not interfering with you, but we shouldn't. Put a sign up saying restaurant park.
In the note back, it needs to state that there would be no plowing of that road by anyone besides our highway department. So we would not be looking to subcontractor.
Cars whose liable.
Or you would have to, if this, if if this was, it'd be like Clark Farm Road, they'd be an intermunicipal agreement and there would be insurances and. Work response, all those things would come into place, but. The problem is that's not the intended use of this property in the first place, whereas like proper, that's what happens.
In the winter months, I did progress towards the river, where it snowed down the hill. Back, come up to the river so that I have plenty of place to put snow, I don't plow the whole parking lot. Continue plowing the rest of the parking lot.
So Sheriff's saying maybe.
In the beginning, you might wanna consider not pushing it as far back.
As far back.
Because you may find that people are gonna start. And then it's gonna block them pulling into park where they want.
Well, Bruce is asking you to do it for nothing, I think, you know, we recharge.
No, no, but that doesn't matter, we can't.
Oh, no, I I totally recognize that's what he's asking.
Another good status quo.
I think that, yeah.
So I will respond to that um. I will respond, okay, that's your.
Is that, is is that now open for year round parking if you do this?
No, we're not doing that, we're not doing anything. We're not doing, it it's staying status quo.
It's doing, it's staying the same.
We're not making any changes to it.
So are people going to be allowed to park down?
We don't plow it for parking.
Right, it's not.
Snow, I don't plow the parking lot.
And then once the snow's gone, will that open up further?
Well, it's a.
Allowed to park there now on that lower part, we're just saying we're not gonna specify that it's parking for a restaurant after five P M. It's not gonna become a, yeah, municipal.
It's gonna be a park.
It is a park. People going down to enjoy it, is there going to be a conflict between the divers? And the people that are going there for what intended use of the park?
I think we'll have to see how that goes. You know, for sure, if there is, then.
I haven't heard of that.
I mean. Usage sign or park.
Right, if it becomes a problem, I think.
If you put sign, you know, something that says park only.
Yeah.
You know, car, I don't know, vehicle parking for park only or something.
Hasn't yet, so unless he tried to advertise it somehow, then which is.
Well, and I think in that letter to him. He cannot advertise this as a parking lot.
He tried that once and I sent out a letter that said.
I definitely, he definitely can use it for selling.
Alright, okay. You get on that?
Yep.
Okay, um, under all business. I was able to catch up with. The town leaders over in the arena, um, and discuss um, the concerns with the dispatch agreement that um. We've been quite vocal about. Um, I see what was happening, we we had an understanding, we were reading it one way, they were reading it one way and then. When I sat down and discussed it with her. The thought behind it was is that dad forbid there's negligence on an officer responding to a call. Say the officer doesn't respond or. An officer, meaning one of our officers, their dispatch, they don't respond or their dispatch.
And that's our.
And they're clearly, that's our fault, she says they they were trying to say that if that happened. They were not to be, they could not be sued by that individual or us, which makes complete sense. On the flip side, I said, well, on our part, if there was negligence or procedures weren't followed. On the way it was dispatched, we would want to be certain that our residents and department are protected. Great, so we went back kind of back and forth um, with our final. Piece um, that we sent off to Laura, and we finally have Laura's blessing.
Oh, good.
As well, is that the town of, the town of Woodstock agrees to indemnify and hold harmless. The town of Lincoln against any negligent claims, actions or lawsuits. That may be brought against the town of Woodstock due to the town of Woodstock's negligence on a call for service. However, should the town of Lincoln fail to exercise proper procedure and or is negligent in their service under this agreement. The town of Woodstock waives such.
Yeah, let me give you just a quick example, it's happened in the last three or four weeks. Uh, we had an officer that had some, stopped somebody underneath the overpass. They dispatched, turned up somebody to go to top of our river, so. In the event that all of a sudden was a call for help, uh, for an ambulance.
Right.
And he's gonna go out that right way, he's gonna go to the top of the hill, instead of taking a right. And going, you know, half quarter of a mile to the.
Right.
So.
So this would protect us from being. Yeah, and that that Lincoln was at fault.
They're married to the dispatch errors.
Right.
And they're married to office errors, which makes sense.
But also my concern is if somebody's injured or worse. I'm I'm trying to 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 minimize every possible. And throw the illness on them so that they may be a little more careful about, and when it was brought up to them. The officer said, well, um. When I went back to him, I said, because the guy that they stopped was going to fight the charge. And when he called and said, you need to change the uh, lawn, dispatch didn't wanna do it. He said, we don't have any choice, cause this guy's gonna contest this, so you have to, but. That was, and this happened within the last three to four weeks. So.
Right, but I think, again, it goes back to the dispatch made an error.
And that's their fault.
And then, so when the guy comes back. He's going to go after the town of Lincoln, not the town of Woodstock, Woodstock was not called to service properly.
As originally said, well, it was.
Everything.
Everything was not gonna be on call.
Right, right, and this clears that. And like I said, Laura has reviewed this, Laura has given it her blessing at this point, and it will move, it'll make the.
Agreement, it would be her.
Right.
Well, I I'm confident in that.
Yeah, so. Okay, this will now go to Lincoln.
And we're good.
And hopefully Lincoln's attorney shall show me that as as we did and and accept it. And one day we can vote here.
Monday to seven.
Monday to seven, so yeah, this is coming. Yeah.
I sent you an invite, all you have to do is say it's up.
Very good. So next up, we welcome any public participation on any of the agenda items or something. Very good. Well, being none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at five forty nine P M.
On that level, so it's October seventh.
Motion, yep.
Second.
All those in favor? Roy, John, Jim.